I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. A rise for the flag salute. Oops, where's the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under the flag, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me. Okay, now we have to do roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Before I answer, I want to be correct, clear. I did not ask for this. That said, present.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. All right, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. We do. We would like to add a proclamation celebrating Korean-American Day to your agenda tonight as item number five, which would move, conduct councilmember oaths of office to item number six and so on down through the agenda, if that's acceptable to council.
So we want to add number five, and then the five that's there now is five eight?
Would be number six.
Number six, so we're just going to move everything. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so that's all the changes?
That are, those are all the changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next is the public, public comment section. Do we have any people signed up here and online?
Yes, we have one person signed up, Rebecca Minor. You have five minutes to speak at the podium, and please just state your name and city of residence, please.
Good evening, thank you for having me. It's evening, my name is Rebecca Minor. I'm an Edmonds resident, and I'm the superintendent of the Edmonds School District. And it's my pleasure just to come tonight to let you know that we're going to be running a bond and replacement technology capital levy, and we have two upcoming events in Mount Lake Terrace. These are informational presentations for any of you or any members of the public to attend, to come and learn more information about that. Those are at the Mount Lake Terrace Public Library, and that one is on January 11th at 5:30, and we also have one at our Mount Lake Terrace High School Library on January 18th at 5:30. So I hope if you or any members of the public are interested, you can come and attend and learn more about those initiatives, which will be on the February 13 ballot. We also have a suite of information on our website, including a recorded presentation, so I hope you'll take a look at that and let us know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to speak, please use the hand raised tool, and we do have Sabora Dean. Sabora, you'll have five minutes to speak. If you could just state your name and city of residence, please.
I'm going to go ahead. Hi. Good evening, my name is Sabora Dean, and I am a resident of Mount Lake Terrace. I have lived here since 2013. Thank you for your time tonight. I was in person a couple of weeks ago. Tonight, I'm not able to make it in person, but I come to you with the same message and the same request. We are two weeks further into a really tumultuous situation in the Middle East, and I ask for city council to respond to this request of a statement from the city stating that we support a ceasefire in the area. Every day that we, as a country, don't enforce and encourage a ceasefire, thousands of lives are lost, and they're preventable, and I think that's really the biggest thing. But one thing I wanted to bring up this time, it's a little different than last time, was a story. It's a religious story, so bear with me, but it's of the prophet Abraham, who is the prophet that all three of our Christianity, Judaism, and Islam all came from, this prophet. And there's a story where he was thrown into the fire by the oppressor of his time, and a bird would take drops of water in her beak and drop it over the fire. So a small little bird, small little drops of water, and they would throw it over the fire. And the other animals laughed and said, "What would your drops of water do for the largest of fires? This fire is incredibly big, and you have such tiny little drops. How ridiculous. Why would you, why would you even put in the effort there?" And the bird replied, "It may make no difference to the flames, but when I'm asked, 'Your friend was burning, what did you do? At least I won't be ashamed.'" I want to make sure that even though our small, little, four-square-mile city of Mount Lake Terrace may not have a huge input or enforcement on what the rest of the country does, but that when we go down in history, years from now and even, you know, tomorrow, that we, as a city, can speak up and say, "We are not to be represented by this encouragement of genocide." So I would like some sort of response from city council, and I hope that this is something that we can stand behind and stand together on, that innocent lives being claimed, that a 92% civilian casualty rate is not something that we support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else in the online audience who would like to speak, please use the hand raised tool. Going once, going twice, and a public comment.
All right, thank you very much. So next, we go on to the consent calendar. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar items A and B.
So it's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have not read my paper yet because I couldn't get it in. So I won't be voting, I'll just abstain.
Okay, did everyone hear that? And can we still vote?
You can, and Councilmember Sonmore would just abstain.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved and signed it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries with one abstention.
You can ask for any abstentions, and councilmember can answer in the affirmative.
So I have to ask for that?
Yeah.
So do we have any abstentions? And I guess you answer.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, and then we can continue? Thank you. All right, so next is the proclamation. We have a special proclamation tonight to recognize, oops, Korean-American Day. And so we'll have the boss over here tell us where we're going to stand and read and all that.
All right, do our guests and loners want to come join us?
Should I add here too?
Let's try it here. Do you need a microphone?
I'll grab one.
We're good.
Testing.
All right, Madam Mayor, I'm going to have you come take a big step forward. Let me do a test if you don't mind, and anyone else that wants to be here, who wants to come up as well? And may I have a probably a few of them?
No. Well, I think.
I think that's really nice. So when you're ready, first off, can we have everyone just give it one sec? Can we just have everyone look at me and my camera just for one nice screenshot of everyone? I'm going to go a little closer. All right, anybody else need something before we get started here?
One, two, three.
All right.
Okay.
I'm so glad that we have three people.
Beautiful, thank you.
I can start? Okay, so I'm going to read the City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation for Korean-American Day, which is January 13, 2024. Whereas in 1882, the U.S. signed a treaty of peace, friendship, and commerce with Korea, allowing each country to establish a diplomatic mission in the other's country; and whereas, on January 13, 1903, 102 pioneer Korean immigrants arrived in the United States, initiating the first chapter of Korean immigration to America. Koreans initially worked on Hawaii sugarcane plantation as contract laborers. Later, another wave of Koreans immigrated because of the Korean War, and after immigration laws were relaxed for people from Asian countries in 1965. And whereas, since 1903, over a million Koreans have immigrated to the U.S. and the city of Mount Lake Terrace, it's home to many community members of the Korean heritage. And whereas, Korean-Americans are an integral part of our community, with contributions observed in all facets of American life, from politics to industry, entrepreneurship to volunteerism, the arts and education. And whereas, in 2003, to celebrate the centennial year of the first Korean immigrants, the U.S. Congress formally recognized January 13 as Korean-American Day with bipartisan support. In 2007, Korean-American Day was recognized by the Washington State and Korean-American Day Festival Foundation was established to commemorate this day for future generations. And whereas, Korean-American Day is a time to raise Korean-American status and promote harmony in the Korean community. Events and activities encourage the next generations to recognize their heritage and become Korean-American leaders who consider the perspectives of our community. And whereas, the city of Mount Lake Terrace commits to recognizing the significant history and contributions of Korean-American community members and strives to reduce barriers that result in social inclusion, economic mobility, and meaningful civic engagement. And now, therefore I, Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the Mount Lake Terrace City Council, do hereby proclaim January 13, 2024, as Korean-American Day in the city of Mount Lake Terrace, and encourage our community to join us in celebrating this holiday. And we have three members from the Korean community here. You want to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Cindy Ryu, state representative for the 32nd, and I am very proud to be representing Mount Lake Terrace in the legislature in Olympia.
Hi, my name is Soonakim. I'm at Washington State Korean-American Day Celebration Foundation Board Chair, and I really appreciate that you recognized Korean-American community today.
My name is Yun Hong. On behalf of the Korean community, we thank your mayor and councilmembers for this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who is going to take this?
She's the president, so.
Okay, but you wanted photos with all of us?
Together, you're in the middle.
Perfect, let's go. Couple more, very nice, beautiful, thank you. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to connect the councilmember oaths of office with our city clerk, Jennifer Joki. And who's going to go first?
Never done that one before.
Did you want us down there, you said?
Good to me.
The oaths are right here, if you want to do it together, and those are who are not stand over.
And I don't have a preference. Does anybody have a?
Let's do it together. For the photo, I want to invite the other councilmembers to line up along here, please. And I'd like the either oath to be around here and a half.
This is why I said not tonight.
Yep.
I'll come direct you, you can rest assured.
Hello.
Need a little more clearance. All right, wait for me. And then I'd like to have you sit a little closer. Yeah, we don't want to look forward. That way you can be in the frame or not, but you know how I feel. Okay, Jennifer, maybe if you sit closer, so a little bit closer. May I see some of you folks that's a little closer? And councilmembers, will you please take about two inches of width? A straight line will be better? Yeah. And maybe just a tiny bit more space separation. Yeah, let's have you come around the mayor. Maybe we don't move it a tiny bit. We didn't think about the left pick. Okay, and then we have a, yeah. Do you want to do one? All right, I just do one, so I can think. And so the top is the. If I may, can we just help someone with a quick. All right.
Is that what you said?
I didn't mean it, no.
All right, Madam Clerk, I am ready, if you have the confirmation.
Now I'm going to do it with my.
I kind of want to say. Okay. Is this, hello? Okay, so we will start, and you can all just say it together, and then I will, that it's recorded.
I think it's your choice.
Yeah, let's go. This is their venue, I'd like it that way. Thank you.
I state your, state your name.
Erin Murray.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of City of Mount Lake Terrace Council.
Of the City of Mount Lake Terrace Council.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Let's do one, and then we can step in or out depending on how you feel. Let's have everybody just look at me for a nice warm little stop. Look at me, look at me. Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, and I will need you guys to sign. Sorry. Okay, everyone's back? All right, so next on our agenda is to elect a new mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, and the paperwork for that. I've got mine. All right, so city clerk, are you going to be starting this?
Yes, and you should each have a copy of the script, just so we can all follow along. And I just want to point out, our executive assistant, Lan Nguyen, is going to be tallying, documenting, recording what we're being said, because I can't do three things at once. Okay, so are there nominations for mayor for the 2024-2025 two-year term? Mayor Pro Tem Wal?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll nominate Kyoko Matsumoto Wright for mayor.
There's no need for a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none, I believe we have a mayor. Do we, I think we still have to do a voice vote.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start with Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Aye.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Aye.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Woodard.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now do I start this next one? All right. Are there any nominations for the 2024 Mayor Pro Tem?
I nominate sitting Mayor Pro Tem Brian Wal.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? How many seconds do I give it? Okay, and so we still need to vote on this one? All right.
Sorry. Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Aye.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Aye.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Woodard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, thank you, everyone. So next on our agenda is to appoint, appointments for the intergovernmental boards, and we have several pieces of paper in front of us, and one, one is the, the large one is the one that we're going to be picking tonight, and then the smaller one, which says housing, this other one is Snohomish County Cities, and I just wanted to have this in front of us so that you can see what is open and who is running for Snohomish County Cities. We're not voting on this tonight. Apparently, we're voting on it on the 18th. And at the Snohomish County Cities Dinner. But I just wanted you to notice that we have a few of our people running to, as incumbents. Brian Wal for Finance, and Brian Wal for Executive PSRC Board, Executive Board, and Brian again for Growth Management Policy Board. And, and it says Conservation Futures, Mike Quinn of Woodway, but I'm also on that one, but we're not. I guess his must be ending, because mine is not. So that's why I guess my name is not here. And then we have the yellow, the yellow sections are all open, and so if you're interested in any of that, please let us know so that we can campaign for you guys. But tonight, we're doing the, this big board, this, the big sheet with the blue. And so how we've done it in the past is that the most senior person gets to choose first, and then, so the most senior person on our council is Laura Sonmore, and then I'm the second, and then Brian is a third, no, Rick is the third, Brian is the fourth, Steve is the fifth, and then Erin's sixth, and Rory is seven.
I was seven for many years.
All right, so, so we'll go to Laura Sonmore first to take the first pick.
And I just want to point out, for left one, can we take that one off, since that's done separately?
I couldn't hear you, which one?
Left one.
Could you, is your microphone on? Oh, okay, I didn't see it.
So that one has to be appointed by the 12th of this month, and apparently is appointed by the mayor. So I, one thing that I would like to know is who wants to be on it?
I'd like to continue it.
Would you like to continue on? How about Mr.?
But I don't want that to count as my overall.
Yeah, no, we're not.
We heard you.
Okay, so we'll take it off with.
You're welcome.
With continuation. I'll just put down. I'll just put down that we're just going to continue this.
Okay. Oh, Park and, or, I'm sorry, left one is.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, I thought you said something else.
Okay, so then you get to choose the first one.
Park and Rick.
Okay, and I am, I get to choose the next one, and I'm going to go for AHA. And then Mayor Pro Tem Wal. Oh, I'm sorry, Rick. You're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Arts Advisory Commission, please.
Thank you. And now, Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Thank you. Snohomish County tomorrow.
Okay, and then after that is Councilmember Woodard.
I'll take the, sorry. I'll do Snohomish County tomorrow alternate, because there's literally nothing to do.
Okay. And Erin Murray?
I would like to remain as liaison for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission.
And then Rory Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like the Community Transit, please.
Oh, Community Transit is not something we can pick tonight. That's another one. That's voted on by the Community Transit Board.
I see, okay. Well, in that case, throws a wrench in my, my rubric.
Are there any others on here that we can't really pick from, so that people are not going to get their hopes up?
Good, while we're on the topic, can I ask a clarifying question as to how and when did the Community Transit Board picks membership?
You have to get your name on, on their, on their list, and then you have to go to, and then you go to the, where they vote, and then they vote right in that room, and you campaign there with the other members of the board.
Okay. Good to know, thank you.
Happen for Rory, just so we could promote him through that.
Yeah, we'll let you know when it comes up.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, so I don't know if that qualifies as my vote, but otherwise, I would love to be alternate for the AHA Board.
All right, and now we're back to number one, so that'll be back to Councilmember Sonmore. And then, so it's. Well, I can take. Well, I can take alternate Seashore. And then next is Rick.
For your information and consensus, I would like to continue with the left one Disability Board.
Okay. And that would be Brian.
I will go with Finance Committee again as well.
All right. And then after Brian will be Steve again.
I'm going to pass.
All right. And then after Steve is Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a clarifying question as well, and maybe it's a question for Councilmember Woodard. The Lake Ballenger, McAllaire Creek Watershed Forum, I thought that was going away? That's, okay, I was going to say, I thought, yeah, that was changing in some way, shape or form. So I guess I would appreciate clarity.
I can speak to that a little.
Oh, could you? Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. So it's a wonderful watershed forum. Let me start there. It's a little bigger than Lake Ballenger and McAllaire Creek now, which is why I'm open to somebody else stepping in. I think this would be a great time to get in on the ground floor if this has been an interest of yours. This will be looking at larger watersheds than just Lake Ballenger and McAllaire Creek. I think this new model is going to work out very well. They meet tomorrow, you know, and if no one takes it, then I will gladly continue on. But I just felt like, again, it is changing. The scope is getting bigger. And so if this is someone's actual passion, I didn't want to, my interest was our lake. So now it's getting bigger. I just want to support our city staff in, you know, recognizing sometimes that means to take a step back.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add on to Councilmember Woodard's point, I think, of interest to our city and this watershed, I hear on the sort of near-term horizon, that Washington State Department of Transportation may be replacing the culvert that this creek flows through under I-5 so that there will be things of interest with this sort of body of work.
So between the two of you, who wants it?
I need to process. Well, do you have strong feelings between that and Seashore? I would lean then towards primary for Seashore Transportation Forum.
Okay, and then Rory.
Yep. In that instance, I will go with the, whatever the Expanded Watershed Forum is called now.
Okay, so you're going to take the primary?
Please.
Okay, now we're back to Councilmember Sonmore. Okay. And then, so it's back to me and I'm fine with what I've had. There's, what is left? It's alternate for the Lake Ballenger Forum, and that is it.
Which I am happy to serve as the alternate if you can't make the primary that day. Like I said, it's a great group, so again, I just want to.
So we already have an alternate that's staffed?
Yes, technically, she's there all the time. But again, in the spirit of, if you want an actual council member as the alternate, I'm happy to make sure we have that presence there.
Shall we just ask if anybody wants that? Because that's the only thing left.
Yeah, I'm kind of volunteering. I'm like, I'm not sure what's going on right now. You not want me to be the alternate? I mean, if you want to say that, I'm like, I don't mind not being.
So we'll put Steve's name on there? Okay. And so with that, I think we have, oh, no, no, we are. We have covered everything. Right. Okay, great. Thank you very much. And please look at the other, the Snohomish County Cities list because we would like to see a few other Mount Lake Terrace members on there.
And I'd like your support for.
Plus, yes, we need to be there to support the people who are from Mount Lake Terrace running. All right, so next on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council. A couple of things to mention tonight. First, wanted to formally let council know that we are moving the code enforcement function for the city. We're going to change that from code enforcement to code compliance. And we're moving that function from the Police Department to Community and Economic Development. That will be effective February 5th of this year. And I think it will result in an effective code enforcement program for the city, which I know is a priority for all of you. So we'll move forward with that. A couple of other things to mention. We've had lots of engagement on the utility changeover news online. I think Ricky, if she's still here, if she's not, but she has done a wonderful job communicating that change to our community. And we've had quite a few signups, a lot of people interested. And so far, it's been working well. Been a few hiccups. I mentioned in our last meeting, but we're working through those. And I think that will address the auto pay and the online payment processing long term. So that's a, that's a good program to move forward. The winter and spring recreation schedule is underway this week. Lots of activity at the pavilion, so that's a great thing. And we continue to work on expanding the translation services of our city communications for the citywide communication program for our community to make sure we translate those and make sure all of our citizens understand what our city is doing. The Arts Commission announced all of their monthly library exhibits for the year. And they do a great job of planning ahead and communicating those in advance. So that's, that's a good thing, I think. And we are in production for the next city happenings in the spring. The cover theme for this next one is volunteering. So that'll be fun. And it'll coincide with Volunteer Appreciation Week, which happens in April. And you may have noticed that over the last week, Parks has been resurfacing the gravel parking lot near the Sonics Basketball Court. So wanted to call that out. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the City Manager? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. One, yay for the re-graveling of that parking lot. As somebody who uses that parking lot, that is incredibly exciting. And I'm sure our community will be very, very appreciative when they see that. And then my only other question was, can you reconfirm for us, as folks are, you know, kind of navigating, you know, getting set up with our new utility billing process? I know we talked about a pause on any late fees and that we wouldn't be charging any late fees. Can you reconfirm for us what the date is that that goes until so that folks have clarity that they are not being charged late fees as they get their new accounts set up?
Yeah, late fees will not be accrued until through March 21st of this year. Ninety days from, approximately 90 days from the day that we started.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, so next is the Council Liaison Reports. And I can start over there with Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations. As I recall, we haven't been together since about the 21st or so, so I went back to December. So on the 22nd, I had the honor of working with the Foundation for Edmund School District and delivering holiday meals to our residents all over the Edmund School District service area. There were 55 drivers in total. This year, we just had to deal with liquid sunshine instead of ice and snow last year, which was very much appreciated. Then on the 25th, I had the honor of working with Caravan Kebab and putting together a ragtag team. And we got 283 hot meals out into the community on Christmas Day. And we'll make that an annual moving forward tradition. Then I'm going to jump to January 3rd, but know that in between that time period, we've been dealing with cold weather shelters, food banks, both of which we still need volunteers if folks are interested in that. So I've been heavily involved in that, if you follow me. And then also planning for MLK Weekend, which inviting everybody here. Several events in the South County, we're bringing forward on that Sunday and that actual Monday. But moving forward on January 3rd, which was yesterday, hard to believe that was just yesterday. It's only been four days. This has been the longest year ever. So just yesterday, we had in this very room, the Comp Plan Advisory Group meet. And I thought it was a very fruitful conversation. And I bring that up to just say, if you recall, at the end of the meeting that we were together, I had asked about charging the City Manager with looking into what would rent stabilization look like here in Mount Lake Terrace? Well, you'll see this, so consider this foreshadowing. You'll see this come before us when the consultants bring that same slide deck to us that they shared last night. But I'll just read what it says. Mount Lake Terrace has a relatively high eviction risk compared to the county. 2.81% in 2018 compared to 1.9% for the county. And their source is the Department of Housing and Urban Development, a tool out of the University of Washington. I don't mind disrespecting them, but nobody's going to look that up. Nonetheless, that'd be in the slide deck. So just want to reiterate that the concern has always been here. The opportunity, though, is presenting itself right now for us to be thinking about that. So again, I don't know if we need more than one person to say we want to look into that, but I'd like to know what that process will look like, if we can move forward to looking into it. And then moving back to my final report, which is happening today, I had the honor of going over to Meadowdale High School. They have a student health clinic that's basically helped mostly run through community health centers, CHCs. Mount Lake Terrace High School is the next one to get one of these, is actually up and running now. They're bringing it to fruition. But it's just an amazing bringing the social determinants of health, which we know impact everyone, but not saying, oh, that's outside of our school's concern. Instead, bringing that right into the heart of the school. While I was there, I met with a number of nurses, a dentist, a doctor. It's amazing. It's an actual full clinic, from x-rays for dental work to just someone to talk to. And they're building that out. These are not new, but their need is kind of this moment where the more folks that can talk about them and learn about them, the better. Which is to say, if you haven't yet, because I think it's on me to send it to the City Manager, you will get an invite for the Mount Lake Terrace Tour that's coming up pretty soon here. Clearly, it'll be in the afternoon because they work, they work and they got to get home to their families. So if you can't make it, I can't do anything about that. But you are absolutely welcome to reach out directly to them and see if you can set up a time. But you will see the Mount Lake Terrace Tour requests coming soon here, if you will. I'll try to get that to you by today, but in your Friday report. So into my report. Other than tomorrow, sorry, Rory, if you have time, we do have a Ballenger Lake Forum, McAllaire Creek Forum meeting. I'll share that detail with you soon.
Okay. Councilmember Sonmore?
To ask, would that health clinic, can any child go to that? And it's a free healthcare right on campus?
Outstanding question. Yes. So the short answer is yes. It's actually for the community. So it's actually kind of aimed at the families, but it also is for the feeder schools into those schools. So in this case, for Meadowdale High, it's all those schools along, whatever that is, 185th or whatever the school, 84th, whatever street they're on. But all their feeder schools, so students can go there. In the spirit of, one more second here, too late, five more seconds. An example of this is vaccines. So for those of you who have school-aged kids, you know, when you hit seventh grade, basically about that 12, 13, you have to get T-DAP, I think is what it's called. But there's like a backlog. And so you literally can't start school without this. Well, having this clinic on site, they now have a actual vaccine way in which to do this, and it's powered through, basically. And so they're getting kids into school much quicker versus trying to get you to figure out how to get to a clinic to find out they don't have the shots. So it's a pretty amazing experience. And they'll do a much better job of explaining it than I will.
You just reminded me of something that happened in second grade. In second grade, at one of the Mount Lake Terrace schools, they lined us all up. And it was, we all got this gun. And they all gave us all these huge shots. But I think it saves parents' time, and I'm just so happy to hear about that. And we had the superintendent here tonight, and that's where I was going to start off with, is, I wish she would have told us something about that as well. But I'm glad that you're on top of that because that's something that's hugely needed. And with that, I'm hoping that Rebecca Myers, the superintendent for Edmund School District, can come back to us. Over the years, we've had many of the school district superintendents come, and we always ask them questions. And one of them is, how come we lost so many schools in Mount Lake Terrace? There's been a ton of schools that have been lost. And a lot of times, I'll just get the response, well, that was before my time. And it still doesn't really help if we're going to bring all these people in and we're closing all these schools, where are these children going to go to school at? So that would, I'm hoping she'll come back and answer some of our questions in Mount Lake Terrace and share some of those stories that Councilman has just told us about. So thank you for that. Since I didn't have any of the boards that I was on in the last couple of weeks, I'm just going to say my last meeting, council meeting, was December 21st. And so I'm just going to give you just a couple of updates. I do have one board that wasn't on this list, the Hotel Motel Committee, will be meeting next week. And then there's also a small committee for our City Manager Review that we should probably talk because that's going to be here before we know it, just to summarize and make sure that we're taking care of our employee and he knows the expectations for the next time. So we want to give him as much heads up as possible. And then I also wanted to talk about safe routes to school at some point and what funding that we can get in the future and what is on the list for safe routes to school and talk a little bit about that. And then also to inform everybody, Lauren Simmons, he's a former council member of Linwood. He had four terms in, very nice man, just passed away on December 30th. So I was just going to give a shout out to him. And last but not least, I wanted to talk about the council retreat. I know we have to select a day for that, but I'm hoping council has some input on that council retreat. In the past, we've called, we've hired coaches. We've flown somebody in from Minnesota that did leadership training. There was a whole host of different things. And we used to have a list of all the different opportunities that were out there that could educate councils on, you know, leadership and getting along with each other, doing teamwork. But it was a whole host of things that also included staff in some of that. And then we had one woman that met with us and then she gave us like each five coaching sessions afterwards, and it was very interesting. So I'm hoping that we'll hear a little bit more about that. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep it short and sweet. I took some time off for the holidays and was forced to take some time off as I got really sick. But it was a good time of year to be able to take some time to just rest and take care of me, which was really nice. I want to make sure that I say thank you to our community. I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to serve another term representing you here on the City Council. I feel like I came into this role four years ago, you know, not, knowing I had lots to learn and then the pandemic hit and I felt like I had more to learn than I ever anticipated, you know, but it has been an incredible experience. I am incredibly excited about the direction that we are moving in as a community. I am incredibly excited about the staff that we have supporting the council's vision and the colleagues that I get to serve with. Congratulations to those who are also sworn in for another term or for a term tonight. And just really, really looking forward to our retreat and all of our comprehensive planning process and all of the really exciting things that we have planned. I think most folks know, one of my primary drivers for running for City Council was to look for ways to create more onramps to city participation and civic engagement. And I just, I look at all of the things that we have done the last four years to bring more folks into, you know, the opportunity to serve the city. We created an entirely new commission with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. We have, you know, a ton of new commissioners who have raised their hand and helped some people. have raised their hand and helped some folks who maybe were ready to take a supporting role in our community, who had been, you know, serving for decades, you know, faithfully, you know, let them, you know, step, step into a supporting role. And so I just, I'm incredibly excited about the intentionality. You know, we, we created a role around communications that I think has made a huge difference in ensuring that our community is aware of what we are doing and where they can plug in. And I just, I think there's a lot more of that good stuff to come. So anyway, I'm excited. I'm appreciative. And I will keep my report short and end there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report. Just want to thank our city for having a brand-new city manager. It's been around for about, eh, seven months now. And he's doing a great job and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also don't have much specific to report, given the holidays. But in the spirit of saying thank you and starting the new year off right, and having been sworn in to, you know, the remainder of the term that, that voters elected me to, I'm also, you know, want to pause and reflect and give my appreciation to, you know, the fact that you all appointed me here about 10 months ago, that I get to continue out serving this term. And, you know, along the lines of what Councilmember Murray expressed, I am tremendously excited to, you know, work towards sort of collaborative community goals. You know, I think we're, you know, doing a terrific job supporting our city staff and preparing for the future and building towards sort of a phase in our city history that will see, you know, a lot of intensity and growth and a lot of new neighbors moving into town, you know, whether you live in Town Center or on 212th or anywhere else in Mount Lake Terrace. I think there are lots of sort of problems and opportunities that we'll find ourselves faced with in the coming years. And I think this year, especially with the opening of Light Rail, will be tremendously exciting. And will bring, I think, you know, many of those problems and opportunities to the fore, really. So just wanted to express my excitement and appreciation for you all and for staff and for the community we all live in. So Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mayor Protamal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, while we're on a note of appreciation, I also am very appreciative of the community allowing me to continue serving for another four years. And I'm also honored by you, having, allowing me to serve as your mayor pro town. I've enjoyed that role very much and enjoyed working together with all of you in helping us keep this city moving forward. I also enjoy the holidays. But I had a rude awakening today. Rude as in busy. Welcome back to the new year. Jumping right in. This morning, started out with Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Board. We reviewed the legislative priorities and regional legislative priorities and kind of an outlook for the session. We also heard from, heard about the Black Homeownership Initiative and the Covenant Homeownership Act that are great programs that really encourage, you know, we heard about the successes of the work plan that they've developed and the successes we hope to achieve through that, through those programs, particularly down in this southern end of the region. And both Megan Dunn, county council member Megan Dunn and myself, who serve on the growth board, encouraged them to expand their programs and look forward to welcoming them up into Snohomish County. We also heard about the Regional Transit Oriented Development Work Plan, heard about the draft regional safety plan, scope of work about, and, you know, I don't know if you guys have renewed your insurance yet for this year, but if you have, you had a rude awakening because we have a lot of accidents, a lot more accidents on the road. So your collision portion of your, if you don't have it, watch out, it's coming. It is a huge increase in your auto insurance. And so one of the things we need to be doing is really working on our safety. We all need to be driving better, obviously, clearly, because we are in a high-risk zone area. And therefore, our insurance rates, even though you may have a perfect driving record, your insurance went up because there are way too many accidents out there. Anyway, bring it back around. We are, we as a region are working on a regional safety plan and putting a lot of work into how we can improve our, the safety on our roads. And as I mentioned previously, there's a lot of funding available, regional funding available to help us address those, those issues here locally. There is also funding for climate grant, climate grants available for us to help address the climate issues. There are, oh, and then we had an industrial land analysis, inventorying the supply and demand for industrial lands, which of course doesn't affect Mount Lake Terrace so much. But, but regionally, it is, it is an important issue that we are addressing and provides a lot of great jobs. Interestingly, on that note, as far as great jobs, we are looking at 24% of the workforce retiring in the near future and trying to replace a lot of jobs. And so it's going to be, and so it is going to be an interesting time where we're, you know, and you face it in the service industry. I mean, all over the place, everywhere, they're looking to fill positions. We're looking to fill positions. And there's not enough workers out there. So it's a challenge, it's a huge challenge, that we all need to be recognizing and figuring out how to, how to address those throughout the region to help our, help our economy and provide the services and goods that we all need and love and hopefully purchase. We also talked about the regional centers and looking at reviewing the criteria for how we designate regional centers throughout the, throughout the region. So a lot of exciting things happening, not only here in Mount Lake Terrace, but throughout the region. And do look forward to working with you all as we continue to make great progress on improving the vitality of our community in the region. Thank you. Oh, sorry. City manager, met with city manager and the mayor earlier today also. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I also wanted to thank everybody on this council for re-electing me as mayor. I'm, don't take it for granted. So I just wanted to say thank you. The, as, as most people already know, I had, I had, I just had a common cold last month. But it was a common cold that stayed for the longest time. And I missed just about everything in my calendar. But here's a few things that I did make it to. And on the 27th, I did make it to the Seattle International Film Festival's presentation of a Lily Gladstone film called Fancy Dance. And the award was named after one of my best friends, John Hardle, the John Hardle Spotlight Award, and given by the Seattle Film Critic Society. What I want to mention about that evening was the audience members from Mount Lake Terrace. I mean, Lily said, oh, I can hear that Terrace is in the house. And the hooting and hollering from, from her old drama classmates from Mount Lake Terrace High School. And her whole family being there and everything. And we learned a lot about Mount Lake Terrace just that evening. So I think that as things, as, as some of the other articles come on, Mount Lake Terrace is going to get mentioned a lot. I can just feel that. So it was, it was a great night. And on the 4th, I, which was today, earlier today, I attended a special health board meeting. Because I was on the executive committee of the old health board, and we had special meetings throughout the year, we had to, we had to vote on the, what do you call that? We had to, to vote on the minutes. Because we didn't have any other meetings to, to, you know, vote on, on the minutes. And then we had to vote on the current meeting that we, we just had. And so now, eventually, in a few weeks or so, or a couple of months, the health board is going to be completely under the Snohomish County. So this is one of the last things that we had to do. And then, then I got my car tabs. And I had to go to Fred Meyer in Linwood because we can no longer go to Mount Lake Terrace. But I heard, and I complained about that when I was at Fred Meyer. And she says, oh, no, Mount Lake Terrace is going to get a new one. So we're going to be, we don't know where. But I did sit, Garthell asked me to sit through the interviews for the, the new people. But I don't know who got it. I don't know who is going to open it up. But we're going to get a new car tab place in Mount Lake Terrace. And it'll be a lot better than going and standing in line in Fred Meyer. And that is the end of my report. I can now go to all the meetings again. So I feel much, much better. So next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Woodard.
A couple, three things. One, I realize I should have put this in the report, but I'm adding it as new business. And really, it's just to let everyone know, very randomly, first, let me say thank you to Teresa Whipple, one, for covering the event back on Christmas Day, but then not letting it sit there, which is to say, about two, three days ago, she reached out to me and said, hey, we have this family that for whatever reason has about, you know, food left over from a restaurant. You know, I don't have all the details. Well, long story short, ended up being quality food from the restaurant that they over-ordered. And rather than that stuff going to waste, we were able to connect them with one of the partners that we learned about, which is Snohomish County Mutual Aid. They were able to take the food and get that to the family. I wouldn't usually point that out. But what was really interesting is that from that, that Snohomish County Mutual Aid has now set up a GoFundMe for this family that received the food. And it was really just this whole idea, one, I know everybody up here has been at a banquet and we've always hit that, oh, what do we do with all this food? And then we wonder, can you give it away? Can you not? Snohomish County Mutual Aid can probably work with you. And if you don't want to be involved, pass that on to whoever's banquet it is and mention that to them. It's a very interesting group. They've been here a long time, working under the radar, but it's things like this. So I wanted to make sure I doubled back and put that under new business, even though technically it could have been in the report. Moving to number two, I really just want to speak to, in the spirit of Mount Lake Terrace being in the house, and I mean, I love everybody looked like there was somebody out there. People, don't, don't, don't buy into my theatrics. Nonetheless, the safe routes to school, that conversation resurfaced on Facebook. And so I wanted to make sure that, one, as we told you we would, we would bring this up. And two, to let you know, your city manager is working behind scenes, in front of the scenes, around the scenes, as are we. So just wanted to be clear that Councilmember Salmore bringing that up wasn't randomly brought up. And we have been moving on it. And as you would have learned, as you went through that thread, a lot of people chimed in. They weren't aware that we were already doing a lot of work. And so just kind of putting that out there. And I think everybody on this council has talked to someone. Some of us live in that area, so they talk about it a lot. But just kind of bringing that back up so that the folks know, as I said on Facebook, I'm saying here again, all seven of us are very responsive. As I just made a joke about, don't buy into my theatrics. Don't buy into Steve's always on the internet, therefore, he must be the only one who's interested. No, we all have very interesting jobs. That's what happens. Mine happens to be in the internet world, so it looks like I'm more engaged. I promise you, I am not. Every seven of us up here are happy to take a concept and help you champion it all the way through, because we're learning along the way as well. As a mayor always points out, we are residents just like you. We are not some super omniscient group. We are learning things like, why does it do that? That is a good question. I just happen to have a microphone. So that said, know that you can work with all of us. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. And then tying that back to, a lot happens behind the scenes. So I do want to acknowledge, thank you again, council, excuse me, former commissioner dean, for speaking again tonight and raising your concern. And I do want to let you know, as any of us would have let you know, we just don't respond to public comment, that we have actually already been receiving through our emails, if you will, from the city manager. Here are examples. I have to admit, I have not had a chance to look at them because it's quite a few examples from across the nation, if I remember correctly, that we are looking at that. So no decision has been made. But you said you wanted an answer. And I will just say, as I said every time in the DEIC, things move very slowly in the government for a reason. So it's really hard to see it. And we don't always remember to tell you, it inch, two inches further this time. Because two inches doesn't feel like a lot. But for government, that could be mountains of distance covered. So that is your response. We are looking at it. We are trying to figure out if there's something can, should, or will say. That's a whole other conversation downstream. But that said, those are my new businesses, which is just to say, congratulations to everybody who was re-elected. You did get my vote, for what that's worth to know.
Anyone else? Mayor Protamal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as we were pointed, we're pointing out earlier during the jockeying for positions, we are also going to be electing new positions for, at the Snohomish County Cities Meeting on January 18th, which is also a council meeting. Do we need a, need an official to cancel? How do we want to handle that? Do we need official motion to cancel the January 18th meeting so we can?
We're going to talk about that internally as a staff. And we will have a recommended option for you at your next meeting on the 11th.
Okay. Very good. That said, please, recognizing that we are going to figure it out, please plan on attending, if you can, the 18th for, for, I need your support. And anybody else that's interested in serving on any of the regional or county bodies, I'm happy to help plug you in. So look forward to talking about it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is sort of a bit of housekeeping, but just wanted to let folks know that, as many of you know, my, my day job brings me down to Olympia during the legislative session. And that begins this, this Monday. It's a short session that runs through the second week in March. And I know that we'll be spending some time, all the time with our legislators before we know it. But I'll, I will endeavor to be in person, but there may be a circumstance or two where I might be, you might see me on the big screen. So thank you.
And it's wonderful that we have that choice. Anyone else? Excuse me.
And I guess while, while we're at it, wanted to echo what Councilmember Woodard relayed about, about the resolution process and that we are, we and staff are doing our research and considering, considering that opportunity.
So we've moved it forward and now staff is giving information because what? What I'm concerned about, if somebody votes no on it, what does that look like for a council member? It looks like you're going against a ceasefire. And I, I, I'm really proud of the woman who spoke. It took a lot of guts to do that. I'm just worried about what bringing up other things that might be completely opposite of that and, and how we would deal with that in the future. So I keep on hearing that we're looking into it and it kind of sounds like it's already a done deal. We're already looking at proclamations from other cities. And it sounds like we're preparing those. So I don't expect any information. I'm just asking questions about the future of how we go about doing these proclamations and how we're looking at them. And by no means do I not want to say that she was not brave coming forward. I appreciate the passion that she's shown. And, but in future, I kind of want to be prepared on how we're looking at the proclamations. And I know the DEIC is looking into that. So it's, it's not something I'm looking for an answer now or putting anybody on the spot for, but just understanding a little bit more about proclamations. Because if somebody votes no, I mean, it could go in the community that you're against a ceasefire. And it might be no because you want to stay neutral. You have, there's other concerns out there that we might not know about. concerns out there that we might not know about. And so, I'm just bringing that forward as concerns, so.
Yeah, and I'll just answer that a little bit, and it's the same answer that we had talked about earlier today, which is, we had provided council with protocols to consider proclamations in, from the city of Kirkland. And we'll be bringing that forward for council consideration and modification to serve our unique purpose.
What did you say about Kirkland? I couldn't hear you.
Kirkland.
About what she brought up tonight?
No, no. We had brought-
Oh, that's what I, that's where the miscommunication was. I thought you were talking about the ceasefire, that Kirkland might be doing something about-
Were two different, two different things. So, a while ago, several months, we had provided council with protocols, basically, on how we consider, how the council considers proclamations and how we do those, what fits into what we're looking to do. We'll be bringing those to council early this year for your consideration and review so we can modify those for our unique circumstances. As far as the process for consideration, the council member Woodard mentioned a little bit earlier of any item, whether it's a proclamation or anything else, I'll outline that in detail in the communication that I send you each Friday. But basically, it's, an item is brought up, we provide some research on that item, and then determine at that point if there's support to move forward. It's basically a decision tree. And that decision tree, I can outline that more for you tomorrow about kind of how that, how that works, before we bring it to council for a public vote or even a discussion at a work session.
Thank you, Mayor. On that, as I mentioned last meeting, I think it's important for us to address proclamations that have to do with the city of Mount Lake Terrace and to promote our city. And also, just for everybody, I know that I'm getting older, but I want you to know where the speakers are right now that you hear me from. Do you know where the speakers are? No, they're not behind you. They're in the front, up there. And we have a vaulted ceiling, and can you hear that? There's an echo. So, when, I hate to say it, but Steve, when you're way down there and you're that far, when you're that far away from the mic, all I hear is an echo. Okay? And I know my students used to say, "Mr. Ryan, you got to go get a hearing exam." But I did take a hearing exam, and I'm doing really well. But anyway, I just want to let you know that the speakers are away from us, and I don't know if you watch American Idol or The Voice, they have monitors in their ear, or you have a monitor in front of you that comes to you so you can hear. We don't have that. That's our speakers, and it echoes because it's vaulted, like a cathedral. But anyway, I just want to bring that to you. I know that our council member Rory Payne Donovan mentioned that he had some citizens say he wanted the council to be more mic-friendly, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, he would like you to get closer to the mic, and I'd like you also to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to-
There's a little awkward space over here where there isn't a-
I just appreciate the man wants to hear me.
I was thinking we were already adjourned. We're just having a conversation. But we will be more respectful. Steve and I will nudge each other.
Again, I'm just glad the man wants to hear me.
And there are times where I can't hear half of what you say, but-
What?
That is all.
So, I just, I just wanted to mention to the public that I think that all seven of us are on the Mount Lake Terrace community page, Facebook page. And so, I would say that there's a 100% chance that one of us has seen whatever you've posted on there, and you're all wondering if the council ever sees it, sees any of it and does anything about it. And the answer is yes. One of us has probably already seen it, already talked about it, possibly even sent it into the city, and things are getting done in the background. So, just know that if you post it, we, one of us will probably see it and do something about it.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe just to add and build on what you're saying, I mean, and, the most effective way to get a very quick response versus posting it on social media, waiting for one of us to see it, send it to city staff, and then have city staff deal with it, is just to reach right out to city staff. They have email and phone, as do all of we, but to the comment earlier, we all have day jobs. And so, you know, the city staff are here every day of the week, during the week, during the work week. And so, Monday through Fri- I'm going to just stop trying to add clarity there, but so, the best way, I mean, one of the best ways to get a quick response, particularly if it's time-sensitive, is to reach directly out to city staff. You know, we're happy to share those messages, and sometimes, depending on what folks have going on, we might not see them for a week or two. And so, I would just encourage folks to get friendly with our staff as well.
Yeah, the most important thing is we can't answer on Facebook. So, that's why you don't hear from us. We're reading it, we're, you know, we know about it, but we can't respond on Facebook.
And I'll just say, we are very customer service friendly and will always listen and respond.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I disagree with that last statement that we're not allowed to respond. I do think you're able to talk, and if you see how I respond, I usually do exactly what you say. I will answer it and realize, you know what, let me direct you to the website, or let me give you this, or that, or the other thing. But, you know, it never ceases to amaze me that people on the Internet ask a question that the Internet would have answered if you had asked it. Right? So, I try to accept that, answer it, and then tell you, "Here's what the Internet would have said if you had have done that." I'm not a magical being, right? But I just want to be clear, I don't think that it is as draconian as you can't say anything.
Well, if you do respond, you have to hope that three other council members don't-
That is a very different statement, right? So, that's, I agree. I absolutely agree with that statement.
Yes, and so, if four of us respond, even like what you said, the like button, it's already been out there that other councils got in trouble for that on Facebook. So, I don't even, huh?
Legal trouble.
Yes, legal trouble. And so, I'd like to avoid that part of it, which is why I don't respond on Facebook. But I do like positive things. I'm figuring if the, if the public out there is going to ding us for being happy for something great that happened, oh, well, we probably shouldn't have responded, but it was a positive thing. Somebody got an award, somebody, you know, so, but anyways, that's why you don't see a lot of us saying anything on Facebook, on the community pages. All right? Okay. Is, I don't see any more hands going up. I think we all want to go home. So, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned.
There we go.